We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll now have our prayer by Mr. Govan, followed by a pledge by Mr. Reed.
Goodbye, ladies. Heavenly Father, it is again Lord we come, asking your guidance, your direction. And you're allowing us to make decisions that are in the best interest of this district and the citizens of Darlington County. We ask you how you will have us to conduct this meeting in a cordial, polite manner, and that when we have finished your act, you will allow us to have a saving, traveling mercy safely and we return to our respective homes. This is your name. Amen.
Do the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
Second. All in favor. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' comments? No citizens' comments, alright. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13 meeting?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve?
The second.
Second.
All in favor. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Awards and honors. What's your name? We have students from track and cross-country team.
We do, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Eddie Shuler, Executive Director, Administration of Operations.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I have the privilege and honor to recognize 10 of Darlington County's two top track athletes.
Sorry, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure it was okay if I did that.
We have each high school representing this evening. We'll be calling those individuals by their respective schools. We ask that you come forward as your name is called. Parents, we ask that you stand as your child is called as well. We'll first start with Hartsfield High School. We have their 4x100 relay team that has been recognized by South Carolina Track and Cross-Country Coaches Association, All-State Team. We have first, Demarion Coe, Keon Hickson, Kalief Miller, and Hakim Waters. Their principal is Mr. Lewis, their managing director is Brad Booty, and their coach is Coach Frankie.
Here we go. Oh. Yep.
Perfect timing, guys.
Say the names one more time.
We're gonna say the names one more time for Hartsfield High School, Demarion Coe, Keon Hickson, Kalief Miller, and Hakim Waters. 4A All-State Boys 4x100 Relay Team. Once again, we would appreciate it. And we want to thank Coach.
Congratulations. Thank you. Take the picture up here. Congratulations. Yeah, good job. Congratulations. Thanks. Congratulations. Thank you. Good job. How do we do this?
Scoot in tight.
Pop over that side. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations. Got some shoes too. Got some sport shoes going on there.
It's not track shoes.
I don't know. They look fast though.
Alright, for Lamar High School. We have three individuals. First, we have Prince Johnson, who's the 1A All-State Boys 100-meter and 200-meter All-State Event. Next, we have Xavier Jackson, Lamar High School, 1A All-State 100-meters. And we have a Spalding Middle School student who ran for the high school that received honors 1A All-State Girls 100-meters hurdles, which you can come forward with Angel Medline.
Great job.
Finally, we have Darlington High School. Quincy Byrd, who's 3A All-State Boys 400-meters, All-State recipient. We have Akiana Sims, Darlington High School, 3A All-State Girl, Long Druck, All-State recipient. And we have Marcus Wells, Darlington High School, 3A All-State Boys 100. Principal Courtney Gerkey, head coach Roger Johnson.
Hope we got parents holding a sec. Hold, hold, hold. Got parents taking pictures? Go ahead. Alright, we good? One more?
Congratulations to all our high school students.
Yes, and we always say at this time, if you would like to be dismissed, our awards winners, or if you want to stay for the board meeting, we're glad to have you with us too, whatever you offer.
Alright, our next regular board meeting will be on July the 8th in the training room. We're gonna be back over there.
Yes.
That's on 120 East Smith Avenue. So, we are looking forward to getting back to there. Dr. Newman, I think, nope, we got Key to Careers.
Yep.
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of our audience, we have Dr. Shannon Flowers with us, who is our Business Engagement Coordinator, who is gonna give our annual update on the Key to Career and Ascend programs. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Flowers.
Thank you all for allowing me to be with you. Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight to give you this update. We've had a very successful year in terms of career development, so I'm excited to share that with you. So, for our 2023-2024 goals, we had, the first was increasing engagement of students in specialized programs at DCIT. Over the last few years, we've kinda seen a decline in the DCIT students that were participating in internships compared to the other high schools that were growing. So, I started having office hours specifically out at DCIT, so I would be around more to be able to have more conversations with them. Or, you know, if someone called me, I could go right down to a particular classroom and have a conversation with that group about who was trying to engage with them. And this increased participation in internships. So, last semester, we had 1, this semester, we had 18. So, that was a very successful goal. Develop an elementary-level career development program. As our programs are expanding, we're getting a younger and younger target that we want to hit. So, we've got high school Key to Careers, we've got middle school Ascend program, now we are gonna be starting a 5th grade program that we're planning to launch in this fall, in August. Bring awareness of Darlington County School District programs to the state and national level. This goal kinda started right in the sail because so many people from other organizations and outside of our district, other school districts, started contacting me, wanting to know more about our programs and share how we're doing it. We're one of the only paid internship programs in the state of South Carolina, so a lot of those other districts were wanting to know how we were able to manage that. Also, those that are paid, they're typically partnered with one or two organizations, so all of their interns go to those groups, whereas in the spring, we partnered with 58 different organizations. So, I presented back in December to the South Carolina Career Development Association. I'll be presenting again with Robbie Smith this summer at the Education and Business, and then I'll be presenting at the National Career Development Association, also at the end of this month. So, the next one, continue to expand the reach of our career development programs. We have seen significant growth with Key to Career and Ascend. Key to Career Internship Program growth, we had 143 internships this year. These students worked 13,307 hours of work, and we had 87 different business partners, including 30 first-time partners. Of those 30, 22 of them were in the spring. We still have great relationships with some of our partners like North Industrial Machine and Senoco, but we've also brought on some new partners, some more small businesses, and continue to expand. 67% of the students this year were asked to continue past their internship period. What that means is that they were asked to either do an additional internship, work for the summer, or hire part-time or full-time. And these students earned $149,031 this year. If you look beneath, you'll see our program totals from the beginning of the program. So, $450,127 have been earned by Darlington County students since the program began, but a third of that was earned this year. So, we're really proud of that. Our overall retention rate is 59% for students asked to continue past their internship, and 396 total internships. From our very first year, our very first four years to this year, we have increased 255% in numbers. As the program started to grow, we continued to run into some of the same barriers. So, we wanted to address these barriers by looking at outside partnerships. One of those things that we did was I wrote a grant, I applied for a grant with the Barley Foundation. The Barley Foundation awarded us last summer $75,000 specifically for transportation for our students. So, that partnership is with PD Regional Transportation Authority. So, the PD Regional Transportation Authority will take our students from their high school to their internship and pick them up and bring them back. And then they are paid for that service through the Barley Foundation. The Hart School Poanis Club each year has given us some grant money, $1,000 this year, $2,000 last year, so that we could pay some students to work in organizations where they wouldn't normally be able to be paid, specifically small businesses that could not afford to pay them. And then the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, they had a grant application for in-school students this past summer, so I helped us rebuild those, and we wrote that grant. We were awarded $50,000, and then an additional 16 this summer, and that money is used to also pay students. So, we had 18 students in that particular program. So, they complete internships the same way that the other students complete internships. They're considered to be part of Key to Career, but it's actually WIOA that pays for them to work. Our Ascend growth, in the pilot last spring, we had 68 grade students, that was four cohorts, and our two largest middle schools participated. That resulted in 16 industry tours with four manufacturing partners. This year, in 23-24, we had 225 8th graders, three middle schools, 33 total tours, and nine partners. We branched out a little bit from manufacturing partners so that we could address all of the different IGP needs. So, in 2024-25, we have 16 partners, and the goal is to serve half of the middle school students in the county in the fall and the other half in the spring. We were also recognized some this year. We had previously had one Harbor Freight Fellow, the Harbor Freight Fellow Program. They actually give students $1,000 when they complete 120 hours in a trade. So, our five students that did that, in addition to their hours with Key to Career, were Kaylee Bennett in automotive technology at Kelly's Electrical Service, Sarah Lowell, a welder from Piece of Work, Katie Cornell is also welding, and she worked at North Industrial Machine. Zachary Burkhardt and Marcus Wells were both part of the McLeod Health Industrial Maintenance Apprenticeship Program. So, we have partnered with McLeod in their apprenticeship program and Harbor Freight Fellowship, so that some of our students can work there. Marcus Wells, who you just saw a few minutes ago, was awarded for track. He was their star pupil out of all of the students in the PD this semester, so he did an excellent job. On top of being an athlete, keeping his grades up, being ready for graduation, he worked an additional 120 hours to be named a fellow. Harbor Freight Fellow Sarah Lowell was awarded the PD Fellow of the Year by the Harbor Freight Organization. Mayo Student Chad Baco was recognized by the Post and Courier for his academic achievements, CTE work at DCIT, and his Key to Career facilitated apprenticeship at North Industrial Machine. And then Ascend was acknowledged by Indigo Spark Group for our career development initiatives because we are the only district that is doing this kind of thing with middle school Some other initiatives that we've worked on this year, New Core Steel Careers and Care Leadership, this is still in process, but they were able to start it last year and go out and visit 11th grade students. They had a very successful program that they've begun because they went in not to address just career needs, but also the needs of these students. So, they went in and they had lunch with them, they went in and, you know, talked to them about what's going on in their home life, they really got personal with the students, and they saw these students flourish because of it. The Senoco mentorship program that we helped set up last year at Bay Ridge Elementary expanded to our school.
It's okay. Just hold it this still as possible, I know. It's okay. That's what you're doing.
It expanded to Hart School Medical School. SBC Credit Union did a program for 10th grade girls called Girl Power Goals.
Can we just turn it off?
Just turn it off.
Ms. Jennifer McGraw is an English teacher at Hart School High School. And Ms. McGraw noticed that a lot of the students in her class, her English class in the fall, were all students that were not planning to go to a four-year institution. They were either planning to go to a technical institution, or they didn't currently have a plan. So, as part of her English class, she reached out to me to ask for weekly partners to go to Hart School High School to talk about career development opportunities. So, New Core also participated in that, Senoco, High Precision, Florence-Darlington Technical College. So, it ended up being 14 different weeks that people went out to Hart School High to talk to this class. We are planning a district-wide fall career fair, and we are continuing our work with Darlington County Economic Development Progress Board. So, who are we engaging? We're engaging business and industry, nonprofits, state and national career development organizations, and religious and civic organizations. So, in this year, outside of site visits that I had to go observe students, I did 92 partner recruitment meetings, 12 local presentations, nine networking events, South Carolina Career Development Association meeting, a member of the Perkins PD Critical Learning Means Assessment Committee, conference speaker at South Carolina Career Development Professionals, conference speaker this month at South Carolina Education and Business Summit, and then roundtable participation this month at the National Career Development Association Conference. All of these are things that are bringing attention to Darlington County and positive attention with what we are doing with our students in terms of career development. And that's pretty much all that I have, but I'm open to questions if you guys have any questions about what I presented.
I have a question. So, I can't remember what it stands for, the workforce initiative, the WIOA ones. So, those, that grant, does it have a time limit on it, or when you have to spend it? Or how, are you?
Yes.
Eating it up already? I mean, I imagine it gets pretty expensive paying the salary, but is that something that'll carry you into next year or something?
No, $50,000 was specifically for this, it was supposed to be the academic year, but we didn't end up getting the funds until around November. So, it took care of our spring semester with those students, and then we were awarded an additional 16, so some of those students are working this summer. But we are in the process of working on the grant for next year.
My only comment would be that the program seems to be very successful. I would suggest that you and Audrey get together and do a report or get a news coverage so that the district can get recognition, because I think that that's a part of what will sell this district.
That's a thing. Why don't we not have her presenting at the school board conference? The situation makes here.
And that's the only thing you could also talk about.
That would be a good breakout session.
Yep. Talking about the annual conference, we're setting you up for another speaking engagement.
I mean, you could count each one of those two. I mean, that would be marvelous.
When other districts started reaching out to us and wanting to kind of form a model, that was kind of an eye-opening experience for us that we needed to be talking about.
So, at our school board conference, different districts have breakout sessions where they highlight things that they're doing or well that they think other districts might benefit from, and I think this is definitely.
This definitely would follow.
Yeah, this is definitely one of them. Especially, I mean, it's become somewhat more than the internship, just the internship program. I mean, there's a lot more to it now.
When you speak, or when you go to these engagements, do you often take a business or employer as well as one of your students possibly?
I have not in the past. I did take a student last year to the South Carolina Education and Business Summit because Ray was awarded one of their top awards. So, she went with us and did some speaking, but I have not.
I was saying, if we wanna help, I hate to say it, from a local perspective, engaging one of our industries that has been involved with this and has hired on or done some internships, what it's down for them, what they seem to do for the student from a third-party perspective as opposed to us touting ours, let's hear it from you, they can convey to others as well. As we're trying to, I say, set ourselves and show what we do, a lot of times, people take for granted, the public takes for granted what the public schools do, and you hear all the other things, and their whistles and everything, but we've got so much, and between DCIT and these programs, what we're doing with the kids, and we're talking about teaching real-life skills, you know, we've kind of migrated away. We gotta get back, and this is one of those programs that does that. I think we really need to do the best we can and get it out. And by having those employers sometimes helps. And they've been helpful.
Especially when we're recruiting new businesses as well, is that we try to at least bring them on board with us to help out, but, you know, the grants, like the WIOA grant we were talking about, that's really helpful because we've got some small businesses that they say we can't afford necessarily to do that. Well, if you'll make sure to have, you know, the students do the hours and have the mentorship piece there, we can provide the money to help offset that for you, so that's helpful.
So, a small company that has two or three employees, but it's a growing company, I say, I have in mind a printing company that does some really neat graphics and things for all kinds of companies. They're growing, but I'm sure they couldn't afford, reason they need them, but they want them to grow, to come in as they grow. That's what you're saying, funds would, okay, great. So, should we help explain that?
Actually, we did have a conversation with Aloe Recruiting about recruiting, and they have also done some videos for us and some other work through the Economic Development Progress Board. And they were very interested in taking one of those interns, but it was closer to the end, so we're gonna talk again.
For all the lines of what Leanne said, I don't know who Gwen sends that information to for the February annual conference, but I don't know, you might wanna call, or if you want me to, I'll be glad to, but that may be something we might need, so she can go ahead and submit to do that.
And what I love to go, that's great, but what I really like is when we do it locally, because what I'm trying to impress is our community, show them what we've got. That's where I like to spend our energy.
And to go back to your question about students, we did take students to the Barley Foundation. We've had some students that have gone with Senoco or other organizations to talk about internships. Senoco is really, they have a great model with what they're doing with their internships and what they're doing with our students, so they have also been very vocal about this.
You know, this is one of the most exciting things about, to me, about the district right now, is because for years, we've always heard the industry not complain, but, you know, want employees trained for school, and for our community and our parents, our people just don't realize the industry we've got, and we're small enough of a community, but yet with so much diverse industry that we can really show the kids something, and the parents. Again, I always use a reference, my own kids, we grew up, they don't have a clue of what we have to offer, and that's what this is, to show them, this is just here. What does the world hold? You follow me? So, that's why I think it's so important, and then it allows them to gauge more, well, gosh, I saw this guy do this, and he makes that, in 8th grade, well, I still got a chance to say, hey, now, I need to get in that geometry trigonometry or that science, whatever it is. It makes more sense, why am I taking this?
And if we could go out to Rotary Clubs, our Sunset Clubs, different clubs over to the county and let people know what we're actually doing.
And we could do it as board members, if you can provide that.
I was on there actually, I was, I was at Rotary, I was presenting to the one, so I was.
We have a couple of community events planned for July 23rd and 24th, which is actually gonna be town halls that we do in the Hartsfield community, in the Darlington community, to talk about these programs, to invite parents out, to try to get the parents out, to try to get, you know, we've talked to our pastors, and they were like, we need our congregations to hear these programs that you have in the district. So, we're actually doing some town halls where we're inviting our businesses with us, we're inviting everybody, you know. inviting everybody, you know, whether it be board members, businesses, kids that participate, our schools, our principals, to say, hey, look, this is what we have to offer, you may not know this, and this is how you can, you know, kind of plug into that.
And not to discount the town hall type thing, but just like with our budgets, who shows up?
Yeah.
So when you can go in a venue, they're already assembled and reason to be there, we perform, like whether it be a convocation, not that, but I'm saying in similar situations when our schools and the parents have to be there to learn in the eighth grade, hey, get your kid interested in this, because they've got an opportunity, hear it now, at the beginning of the school, and again, putting it out in our newsletter, beginning of the year, we're registering for things, keep in mind, the internships are signing, coming up, et cetera. And they say, what is that? A lot of them still, as much as you put it out, they still don't think about it till the time for their two kids.
So that's like right, exactly the conversation. So I've been joining those progress, the Darlington County Progress Board meetings with Dr. Newman and Dr. Flowers since like January-ish, or maybe it was last fall I went to one, which, I applaud you for everything, that those meetings can be really demanding because the group of people get really excited at their, I mean, in this last meeting, they were so excited about all the progress that's been made, that they're like throwing out all these ideas of more and more and more that they want Dr. Flowers to do, which I know can be overwhelming, but it's really because they're excited, because they're seeing progress. And then they're like, oh, that's working, let's do this too. But one of the exact things they talked about, and one of the things that they're talking about is now how, okay, they've been working on the students, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but this is the way I understood it, they've been, you guys have been working on the students, but now, like, how do we start to engage the parents and the community and all the stakeholders and all the levels? And they were talking about that exact thing, like, maybe the industry that's participating should go to football games and set up like a little career fair kind of thing, like at the football game or at the basketball game, so that you're going to where the people are, instead of trying to get them to come. So that was exactly, you're, you're right on, and I thought it was really great conversation. I know it probably sounded really overwhelming this last time, because everybody was so excited and like throwing out all these more and more and more and more things, but, but it's because you've done such a great job that everybody gets excited and wants to throw out even more stuff. And so hopefully we can keep, keep building on it and maybe get you help eventually to keep expanding it. But yeah, that's a really great board, and you're doing an awesome job, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you as well. I mean, I can remember sitting here last year, when you first presented to us, and especially the Ascend program, where, you know, we were like, you had 60 students who participated, and we were like, well, we need more. And so you gave us more, and now, next year, it looks like you're giving us all. And so, I mean, that is amazing, and greatly appreciated. My, my only regret, and I appreciate our, I appreciate our press being here, is that, is that we don't have more local press, and I think sometimes that hinders us in getting our message out sometimes, because we don't have all the press that we used to have with our, you know, thank you news and press while still hanging in here with us. But, and, but you know, it, it's, we appreciate it. So keep, keep on doing what you're doing, we'd love to see a profile article on this from, anyway, we don't have the messenger anymore, but we do have Florence Morning News and other things that we do appreciate. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you also, Ms. Flowers. Thank your staff that supports you, this staff, thank you. Another good point would be for, to get community involvement, put some, feelers out to the churches. That's a strong base in the community, so they can reach out to the children that attend those churches. You know, about 30 years ago, I used to do what you do. Back then, they'd call it CETA, but now it's WIWA. Well, you're doing a magnificent job, attending to what you're doing, your staff reaching out to a lot of children. I appreciate that. I might think I was at MUSC, and you had some students there.
That was also a very exciting partnership for us, she was at the University of South Carolina, Florence, for a few classes. And then we had celebration.
Mm-hmm. I went to Lamar High School, I was talking to them, and they were very happy to be there. So thank you.
Thank you again. Dr. Newman, strategic plan focusing.
Continuation of staying focused on the four areas of the strategic plan, which is student success, staff excellence, community engagement, and resources, efficient use of resources. Just a couple examples for the month of May for student success. DCIT, Mr. Smith is here, of course, several of us were able to attend their completer recognition ceremony, where they awarded certificates and graduation cords and stalls to over 250 completers. And then we had, at Darlington High School, we had 10 Darlington High School seniors that graduated with their associate's degrees. Of course, all of our high schools had graduation, and we had, you know, 600-plus students that we were able to see walk across the stage and successfully complete their high school careers and move on to the next steps. We also had students at Hartsfield High School participate in College and Career Decision Day at the State House, like we did with several of our high schools, I believe, that we had. Mayo had some students there with us as well. And then we also had, at Lamar Spalding Elementary, they talked about their terrific news Tuesday, where all certified staff made two positive phone calls on Tuesdays to parents about the students in the school, which, I mean, a great, great idea. Mayo had their Class Night 2024, where they celebrated the academic accomplishments of the senior class, which amassed $18.1 million in scholarships. And by the way, the Darlington County School District, all high school seniors amassed over $39 million in scholarships, which is the highest by far that we've had ever in the district. So kudos to our seniors that obtained scholarships. And then, of course, at Pate Elementary, they had their Crush the Map Test, where they had goal cards that were made for each student to remind them of the goals set for map testing. Remember, these are K through 2 students, right? So we were making sure that they were kind of in control and knew what they needed to do for the testing piece. And then at Spalding Middle School, they recognized they're all A students with an end-of-the-year award celebration. So just a great time for awards, graduations, again, success with scholarship totals. As far as staff excellence, of course, May was Teacher Appreciation Week, so all schools had something on their list about how they celebrated their teachers and their certified staff. And so they, at Bay Road Elementary, they actually, the teachers received healthy subs from a food truck paid via the Healthy Grant. That's the MUSC Clemson Healthy, Me Healthy SC program, which is established in all of our elementary schools, and they are able to obtain monies to help fund healthy initiatives in their schools. We also had, at DCIS, we had Coach Woods, who is the DCIS Science Teacher, received the award for Outstanding Earth Science Teacher from the National Association of Geo-science Teachers. So that was pretty impressive for our science teacher at DCIS. At Hartsfield Middle School, during their ready, their SC Ready Rally for Students, the student athletes presented their favorite teachers with roses to commemorate, again, teacher appreciation. Nice touch there. And at Mayo, Ms. Lynn O'Donnell received the Outstanding South Carolina High School Arts Teacher Award from the School of the Arts at the College of Charleston, so that was a big award for Ms. O'Donnell. And then at St. John's, they recognized staff who completed math recovery, EL coursework, and also celebrated their new Teacher of the Year. A lot of our schools named their Teacher of the Year and support Staff of the Year. So lots of celebrations with Teacher Appreciation Week, but also other ways of our staff and the accolades that they're obtaining. Community engagement. At Brockington, we had a fifth-grade drive-through celebration parade, where they celebrated our fifth graders with our fourth annual drive-through. Students were policed, they were escorted by the police from Planet Fitness through the streets into the car rider line, so again, a celebration. We had, got to mention the DCIT, where they, during the race week, they partnered with the South Carolina Department of Public Safety and NASCAR, and had NASCAR driver Ross Chastain, who did a community service event, supporting the South Carolina Department of Public Safety's Click It, Don't Risk It Safe Driving Campaign. That was a big draw over there with the NASCAR folks. The Virtual Academy, Darlington County Virtual Academy, the Junior Beta Club hosted a community shoe collection fundraiser. At Darlington High, the, again, during race week, the Raceway put three floats into the parade for Darlington High School, which allowed early college graduates and the girls and boys' basketball teams to be, and cheerleaders to be recognized in the parade. Also, JL Kane, Darlington High School teacher cadets came over and worked with the students and have been working with them throughout the semester. Lamar High School, of course, we got to make, we got to mention the Lamar Egg Scramble Parade that was, happened in May as well, and a lot of student groups and organizations participated in that. Mr. and Ms. Homecoming, Mr. and Ms. Silver Fox, you know, a few, few other folks that were celebrated. North Hartsville Elementary School, the Kiwanis, the Hartsville Kiwanis presented special awards for all As for five years for the North Hartsville Elementary students, and they awarded all As for five-year students with a monetary gift. So that's exciting for those kids, and again, recognition for their hard work. And then at Thornwell, we had lots of community partners, Sam Kendall's, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, Griggs Circle Bakery, and many others that made it possible for Thornwell to have 24 drawings for their week of teacher appreciation for folks, so they helped celebrate our teachers as well. Lastly, is efficient use of resources, and at Bay Road, they purchased learning manipulatives for the new math standards that are coming up, not this year, but the following year, getting ready for that. Again, Brockington had Texas Roadhouse that actually catered Teacher Appreciation Week, so they were able to get them to help partner along with the other ones that I had mentioned in Hartsfield. The Hartsfield High used teacher incentive funds to you, to provide barbecue sandwiches and other treats. Again, several of our, of our schools obtained awards. In fact, our award winner was Lamar Spalding, which received $3,000 from MUSC and Clemson for the winner of the district Healthy Me Healthy SC. So they get to use that $3,000 and put that back into things such as gardens, exercise types of equipment for the kids, tasting new types of food that they can cook, so that was really good to see. And the, North Hartsfield also had their PTO sponsored their end-of-year grade-level fun days that helped with that. So that, that's just an example, again, of the four areas of the strategic plan and how our schools are focused on that, but also want to highlight what they're doing. And again, we appreciate our schools for all of their efforts this year and being able to help us highlight that at the board meetings.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to our action item, which is our 2024-2025 proposed budget for second reading. Can I get a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion for a second reading?
Do I get a second? Audrey, for second? Any discussion about the budget?
No changes from the first reading, is that correct?
No changes.
Still no state budget.
Still don't have a state.
Yeah.
Still don't have a state budget.
So we would amend this if we needed to, is what would happen? That's how it works, okay.
And all our public hearings have been held. And there's no other comments? All in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Dr. Newman, for superintendent's update.
Okay. Superintendent's update, again, I wanted to mention the graduations. Great time celebrating our students and families, and of course, our families being able to celebrate with us. Always a great time. All the board members had a chance to participate in some graduation, and so thank you for that support as well. Cognia, which is our accreditation, we just received the report right before the weekend, so I'm getting a chance to dig through the report and the recommendations and the highlights. So at the next board meeting, I'll have a presentation for the Cognia accreditation process that we went through. But again, early indications are we did very well as a district for what we are doing to help with student success and student learning, and so that's what the process is really focused on. But I'll have that at the next board meeting, once we've had a chance to disaggregate all the information. Same with the communications audit, we expect that sometime within the next few weeks here as well, so we'll be disaggregating those recommendations as well and looking forward to that. We have a lot of summer school programs going on right now in the school district, so today was the start, as a matter of fact, of programs at elementary school, middle school, and high schools. So we've got students and staff across the district right now that are participating. Primarily, those go through the end of the month. There is, of course, the, the third-grade reading camps that go a little bit longer, they go farther into July, but the majority of our summer programs go to the end of the month. And of course, that's for remediation and interventions, but it's also for acceleration that we've been able to offer this year. This is the last summer of ESR monies that we've been able to utilize to not only have students participate that may need extra help, but students that actually want to try to move forward too. So we have the Summer Arts Program going on, the district, Darlington County School District Summer Arts Program at Coker. Remember, Coker has been the host of that recently over the past several years. It's been great to utilize their staff and their expertise that they have, and then they also bring in clinicians as well to work with our students. And that usually culminates with a concert that is a choral concert, and then moves into a band concert as well, so, and I believe there's some dance that they have with the, you know, the final program that they have. So we'll keep the board posted on the dates for when that may be. That's a, that is a fun, a fun evening of the arts. And then lastly, I'll be at the I-3 Conference next week, presenting with Francis Marion University on the, if y'all remember, the Dr. Polowski Center for Excellence, information that we've had professional development on all year long. We started at Convocation, Dr. Polowski presented, and our schools have had month-long PDs, and then we've been able to actually do action research with our teachers and collect data on that, the impact of that, and so I'll be presenting that next week at the SCASO, which is the administrators' conference, with Dr. Polowski, so looking forward to that. And that is the superintendent's update.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Corr, will you lead us off for our board member input?
Yes. First, I would just like to honor our 2024 graduating class. If you're going to a four-year college, if you're going to a two-year college, if you're going to military, or if you're just going out to the workforce, I wish all of you God's speed, and I wish the best for all of the graduates. I'd like to honor all of the athletes that won, that won honors on tonight, and I know that we have honored other athletes before, and some of these athletes have, got scholarships to go to college, and I just wish the best for all of you all. Sweet and sour for me, we're losing some good staff members, and the principal of Lamar High School, we're gonna miss, I'm gonna miss him. Look, I look over there and I don't see Ms. King, and I miss her already, and, and I wish her God's speed, I wish her good luck when she's doing her dissertation for her doctorate in a couple of days, so I wish her God's speed, and I want the best for both of them. And I know we'll be bringing on new staff and new people, and maybe some new changes, but I believe everything is going to be okay. And for the staff that is coming in, and I hope they have right ideals and they're ideals, and they're coming in with, with a vision for the children. And the staff that, that remains, that has been here for, has spent some time with us, I thank you all for what y'all have done for this district. I thank you, Renee. I thank you, Chuck. I thank you, Audrey. I thank all of you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Schule, for what y'all do every day. Every day, y'all do this every day. I just, I thank you, Dr. Newman, because I just come here once a month, or sometimes, you know, during the month to visit and see what you're doing. And I understand the pressures and the stress that you go through day-to-day. So I thank you all for your time, because sometimes you have to spend away, spend time away from your own families. So I appreciate what you do. And I want you all to know that you all are appreciated by me. I appreciate what everybody does, and I appreciate what y'all have done for me. Y'all help me, y'all explain things to me, y'all give me your time, and the principals and the teachers when I visit the schools. I just thank the hospitality that I receive, not because I'm a school district, I, I, our school board member, because I'm just a, I'm just a person like anybody else. But I thank you all for what you all do for this Darlington County School District. And I'm looking for brighter, good things to happen. I'm looking for us to, to be a light in the community. I'm looking for us to let the publics see what the Darlington County School District is all about. Let us see how we love our, own our children and how we're here to help them to become adults and to make it in this world. You know, life skills, career development, all of these things are so important right now to help children grow and to become viable adults. So I appreciate everybody that takes a part in that. Our, our new classes, I see new things, DCIT, everything is, is gonna pull together. That's gonna make us a, a whole as a team. So that's all I have to say for everybody.
Mr. Reed.
I'm good tonight. Sorry to follow that up.
Stop saying that.
Mr. Morpheus? Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to thank the board and, and for our retreat last week. I really, it was, it was really great to have speakers come in from the district, to have dialogue amongst us, to become, you know, to be more unified in our vision for what we want to do for the district, and have that opportunity, that, that day to, to really talk freely about the challenges that we face and, and, you know, try to brainstorm and, and, and work together. So thank you for everybody that, that's from the district that came and spoke to us and shared. And thank you to all the board members and to, and to Dr. Newman for the, the great conversation. And, and just really appreciate everybody that works in the district and all of you that volunteer along with me here to try to make this, this community a better place. So thank you.
Mr. Jeff.
Go right ahead. Your turn.
Dr. Thomas is here. I'd like to take a second just to say thank you for what you've done at Lamar High School. We'll miss you, and I wish you good luck. Appreciate you. The school year just ended. I think we had a really good school year. We made some progress. Not, we don't have a lot of work to do. We always do. But I think we're heading in the right direction, and I appreciate administration for all they've done. And Chuck, Dr. Miller, he gave us a report.
The Jeffords Report?
Thursday, he gave you the Jeffords Report on Thursday, last week. But if you could just give us the Jeffords Report tonight for what's going on, I would appreciate it.
You might have to explain what that is to everybody else.
You have to explain to them, I guess, what the Jeffords Report is.
We all know what the Jeffords Report is.
Okay, I know what the Jeffords Report is.
We've accepted a couple of recommendations since I met with you guys on Thursday, so we're 16 ladies.
16 ladies.
You won't see them in what you have tonight, but we, those have come through.
Very good. We appreciate the job you're doing and your staff.
Mr. Goode.
First of all, I do want to thank Dr. Newman, because this year has been fairly difficult in terms of the number of administrators we have lost, either to retirement or other circumstances. And it is difficult finding replacements. So I want to thank him for his due diligence and his efforts to be sure that we get the best that we can get. Long as I, now I have one question. Are we providing lunches for the children this summer?
We are, yeah. We're doing a summer feeding program. We are.
And the reason I raised that question here, again, I go back to the PR. I've noticed that some districts are criticizing that a lot. And I've not, and may, I may have just missed it, but I've not seen a lot about it, and just wondered if we were doing it.
We've put out a flyer. We've got three summer feeding sites, and anybody 18 years or under can come there and eat. You have to eat in. We can't do to-go anymore because that's a decay rule. The to-go plates were only for COVID. They wouldn't do it. But yeah, we've got the three, and then we're also supplying to, to the schools at summer school. But we have three feeding sites that are open to anybody in the community 18 years from now.
I, I know, I, I get the flyers, but I just think that, and I, I mean, I understand the flyers, but I, I still think we need to find some way, if it's the church, I don't know how we do it, but I just think, you know, the public needs to be aware of it. The other thing is that on Thursday, when we had our retreat, I mentioned to you all about Sarah and the meeting that I was having, board meeting I was gonna have with them on Friday. One of the issues that Sarah has, and one of the things that they're trying to push, is the cadet, teacher cadet program. And so if we have students, they are wanting us to let them know so that they can try to help us with those teacher cadet kids. The other thing is, if we have kids who end up going to college and, and majoring in education, or from their sophomore year to their senior year, they will pick up the tab, or they have an entity that will pick up the tab for it. I had a conversation with a young man yesterday, Walmart, about that. He's a USC land manager in, oh, member of education. He was not aware of it. So I told him he needs to check, because there is money out there for recruitment of students who are interested in, in education. That's it.
Okay.
I just have one thing that I want to bring up. I know we've, we've spent a lot of time discussing our ESAR funds and the wind down of our ESAR funds. I appreciate Ms. Douglas collating this information for me. But I just wanted to give a kind of a summary. Dr. Newman sent this out to us, but I just think it's important that the public hear this as well. Of all the ESAR funds that we received, we were required to spend at least 20% on student achievement. Our district spent 54.58% on student achievement. And I just think that is a, you know, it shows where our priorities were. We spent 27% on technology, and we know how important technology was during the pandemic, as we did with our one-to-one devices and this, that, and the other. So 27% went to, which is kind of an offshoot of student achievement, which was necessary for that. But that 54%, over 54% went to student instruction, student achievement. 27% went to technology. Only 6.7% went to our facilities. 1.8% was COVID-related. And then we had some indirect costs for, you know, managing these funds. And I just think that's a, it just shows a level of management that I think we need to highlight, because we, as I said, we were only required to, to spend 20% of our funding on student achievement, and we did greater than that. I also point that out, too, because this is the first time funding has actually come to a district or to school districts, and they, and we had local control. And Jamie, I know this is one of the things that you constantly rail on. But to me, this shows what local control can do, whereas how we prioritized our monies. And we are, you know, districts are capable of doing this. So when we, you know, it's just, the first time districts have ever had monies given in this fashion that were not specifically earmarked towards, you know, we had to spend it on here, like type one funds, title, you know, it's very restricted how we spend the fund. So I just want to applaud the district, Dr. Newman, your leadership and guidance, and Ms. Douglas, for your management of those funds, because I know that out of your office, that was quite a challenge, you know, of handling all that and the paperwork involved, et cetera, et cetera. So I just greatly appreciate that. So, and that's all.
Kind of piggyback on that one. We did have some flexibility back in eight and nine, seven, eight, nine, eight and nine, I believe it was. It was amazing what we were able to do. We always say we came out and said we were able to do more with less, giving us that autonomy, so to speak. You know, you would think at some point they would get the hint and allow more flexibility with spending, but not only spending, as we said, as we said in our work session, I said a hundred times, as you say, with our academic side, with, well, we give our instructions, what we allow them to do, and give them the parameters in which they have to work in. Again, flexibility, letting them do what they know how to do. It's a good example.
Yeah, prime example of how.
Commend them on the spending on the budget.
Funding on that goes. So, all right. With that, we'll move on to our personnel actions. Kind of get a motion to approve personnel actions.
I'm going to be approving personnel.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Executive session. Okay, can we get a motion, Mr.?
We move into executive session, just both personnel issues and contractual.
I get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move into executive.